One time now being seven o'clock PM, the school board meeting is not called orders in session. First, I want to thank y'all for aligning the adjustment to your schedules so we can have coordination and we move back a week. I do thank y'all for allowing us to move the board. Next thing is some of y'all, I'm sure your phone may have rang because I reminded some of the people I said please contact your school board representative from your district when they were called me. If they know who their district representative was, I would give them the name. Well, you got some calls that was, that was, I'm referring people back to have some discussion with their district representative on the school board. So you may get some calls. The next thing is, have everyone had opportunity to just look at the agenda? And everybody else can look at the previous board meetings from August 12th and August 17th. You have any questions related to the agenda or the previous board? Or can I get a motion?
I like the motion to approve the previous board minutes and the agenda.
The motion is second, I'll use both side ass, I'll pull you the same time, approved. The next thing we have is the superintendent's report.
And I put this in a folder for you and today I wanted to have as up to date information as I could for you because I know there's some decisions on the table tonight and I thought you needed the most current information we have. Um, first page I did do an enrollment update and um, in my notes, I made a note that we are down right now fifty students from last year's funded. Um, average daily membership are funding this year is based on last year's first three quarters, which was six hundred and seventy-seven students. And so now fifty from that down twenty-four from our last day of school. So we ended school with six hundred and fifty-one. We now have six hundred and twenty-seven students plus our forty-one pre-K. And I did ask, you know, our principals and counselors, you know, why we're down in numbers if they had any insight into that and mostly moves out of the district. We've only had two additional go to homeschool, not connect to our four and we have four school choice out, but we have four school choice in. So all but two of these are families who have moved out of the community, somehow or state. But this year, or for next year, you know, will be funded on our first three quarters this year. So, you know, if we get some more in, that can push our average out, but if we don't, right now we're at six twenty-seven. And I'm not going to read through some of these updates or just for your information and you can take a look at it and certainly get back to me if you have questions. But I do want to look at page two together as a group on our COVID nineteen update. And I spent some time this morning trying to make sure I had everything up to date and accurate. At the top of the page, that just shows you, that's what I post every week for the previous week. So I post that on our live feed on our website and on Facebook so that the community can be aware of where, where we are in our numbers. And so that report is as of Friday at three PM. And Miss Pye make sure she has our spreadsheet updated at that time for me. I pulled that and put it out to the community. So that information is a Friday afternoon is there in that top slide. And below that though, I went and made notes of since then. So you can see on Friday last week, we had fifteen active positive cases in our school district that for students, fifteen active COVID cases for students. And we had sixty-five quarantines and students in quarantine. And then I listed all the different reasons. Out of the thirty-nine that were close contacts at school, twenty-seven of those were due to either the positive case or the close contact not being masked properly. If we go back to look at video or, you know, a teacher lets us know the student is consistently not wearing it correctly, which is over the nose and mouth. If we look on video and it's under the nose, we have to quarantine those ADH rules. That's not us deciding arbitrarily who's quarantining. We go by their rules. And eighteen are from out of school exposures, either the household or a parent tells us they were in contact with a positive case on Saturday or on Monday night. And then five of those were symptomatic and/or pending test results on themselves, like they were being tested or they had symptoms that were related to COVID. And then three of those were pending test results on a household member. So mom's being tested, student quarantined, and your mom gets results back. Again, those are eighty-eight rules on quarantines. For staff, we have four active cases and two in quarantine, and those were due to household cases, not school exposure. And so far since school started, as of Friday, we had ninety that had not had to be quarantined, that would have had to be quarantined without our mask policy in place. But because they were either masked or they received their vaccine, or maybe even had COVID within the last ninety days, there's very few of those, then we kept ninety at school and as exempt from quarantine due to our policy. Since Friday, we have had to quarantine twenty-two more. Some of those are related to positive case that actually dates back about a week that they got tested or positive. We had to go back and trace. Some of these are from school bus, some of these are from classroom. But out of those twenty-two, twelve were because a positive, the person who ended up testing positive was not properly masked. So anyone that was exposed to them, when they weren't properly masked, had to be quarantined. Six were that the close contact was not properly masking. And then four were due to exposure during unmasked times like lunch. You know, they can take their mask off to eat lunch, but then if someone spots up their table, they've got to quarantine. Okay, then I went to current numbers as of today because some of the people from Friday's report have come back, like they were able to come back yesterday or they were able to come back today. So our current numbers today is we have thirteen active cases that includes ten students and three staff. So they either have, well, they have COVID, then we have thirteen cases of positive COVID, ten, ten students, three staff. We have seventy-one in quarantine right now district-wide, three are symptomatic and testing, ten were unmasked at approved times like lunch or PE. Twenty-two were not properly masked when in contact with positive case. Thirteen, the positive case was not properly masked when these people were in contact with them. And thirteen were due to household or out of school exposure. That includes eleven students and two staff. So a total of eighty-four were absent today related to COVID nineteen that we are aware of. And I did note here that an additional thirty-seven that would be in quarantine right now were properly masked when exposed. Five were vaccinated and one had a recent case. If not, then we would have had a hundred and twenty-seven out today related to COVID. So that's just a map date. On how many are out, how many would be out. And that's a lot to digest, I know, so questions just about that. Well, at school, we, I mean, yes, I mean, yes, but we also, I think the nurse gets notified by the health department when we have a positive case, we're able to start tracing. So now it's closed back in session, we can keep that better with positive. Well, we have no idea if someone's absent in home because of that and not telling us that, but that, we don't know that, that they're not here. If they come here symptomatic, the nurse makes a phone call since I'm home. And and we do get notified by doctor's offices and health department when they have a positive case or identify close contact. So with school in session, we have a little bit better rain on who's, who really is and who's not.
Do you have a certain number or percentage that had to be before, out of school before you switch to school to virtual?
Well, they've not really set a number to it. They just kind of call it low, moderate, and high. And like right now, I think our highest percentage is probably at the middle school. Some of that's from best contacts, most from classroom. It's at about twenty-eight percent of their student body, but it's not like one grade because it's a crosstown bus. It's that we've got it's sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. So there's not, but yes, if we had a concentration of one grade, then we would need to shift to remote for those classes. Or if we got, I'd say, you know, fifty percent more, we probably need to shift to school. But when we do that, we have to contact our Department of Ed, contact, and I have to consult with them before we can do that. And then I have to report it in our, on their website. And it's counted this year as an AMI day. We have ten approved. So like if middle school had, you know, got up to fifty percent, we needed to shift to virtual learning for just that school. Then their school would be using one of the ten AMI days they get for the year. If we go over ten, then days have to be made up. They're not just giving us that flexibility this year of going virtual without using those.
So AMI days cover all the schools. So if primary school use one, one day, middle school use one, there, those are counted.
Not for the district. It's just count for those schools. So they would have nine left, so the high school would still have ten left.
Each school has ten.
Yes, yes. That's how they explained it to us in our Zoom meeting about this. Um, if it's like, like last year, we pivoted at the high school for one day. We were coming up on a four-day weekend. We were kind of starting to see a high and transmission rate. So we went ahead and did them one day before that to get just that five-day weekend. And then come back, you know, give everybody a chance to be away from each other and come back. It just depends on the circumstances. And that's why I have to call, or contacted the Department of Education and making those decisions. I can't just arbitrarily say we're closing. I have to call them and consult them about that. Now, classroom, grade level, I can make those decisions. I do need to call them on a grade level issue that we don't have to report it to say AMI unless it's an entire building or our district. And moving on, on page three. Main thing I just want to mention here is we have had our maintenance and transportation inspections this year. Minor issues to take care of, but they're either taken care of or in the process of being, then nothing major on those. So that went well. And we have gotten the bottle water filling stations in. That's mandated for next year to have all of your traditional water fountains replaced with those. And we went ahead using our RISR funds and ordered them now because we knew it would take a while. So we did get them in and Brian and Scott are going to be working on getting those installed throughout the entire district. We already had about two per campus, but this will take care of finishing that out. On page four, Coach Jackson's given an athletic update of just what was that going on. We have a very small conference this year, just four, including ourselves, because some of our eight-man, and we're just running our own plans. So our conference play has not begun yet. It will start in week seven against Magna Cove, and that'll be, our last three games will be conference games. And we've been doing very well right now out of conference. But again, our conference start will not start until week seven. Did want to mention in this meeting, if you, I'm not sure if you were able to attend on the seventeenth, but there's an honor this year, extra yard for teachers, and Coach Jackson had his football players vote on someone that they thought went above and beyond. And for them, and they chose Ms. Jackie McPeak from the high school. And so she was honored before the game on September seventeenth with a game ball and a flag and a nice little gift from them. So that was nice to have recognition of our staff that the students selected. On page five, and Ms. Dupree did note, and I'm glad to see, and we want to start moving to do more of this in the future if we can, but we do have a student working in our cafeteria for transition goals to get them some hands-on experience for moving into workforce and once they graduate. And we're hoping to be able to do more of that. Our JAG program is also going to be getting that to get students actually placed in internships outside of our school in businesses and places. So we'll have more updates you on with that as we move forward this year. And primary and middle and high school updates are behind this. Mr. Sprague, is there anything you want me to just hone in on or just for your information here? We do still have some pre-K slots available if you know anybody, what we do, still have some slots we can fill there.
Oh, I do have one. Anybody on the board has any passion or knowledge with greenhouses, where I would love to consult with them.
For the, yes, you mentioned that working on that greenhouse and offering them. And there's some availability from the extension office that can help. And I have some more information. Middle school, Ms. Jones, anything you want to bring attention to here? She's included some surveys, the first unit's and staff on how things have gone with capturing kids' hearts and just different things this whole year.
Things are going well. I will add something, like that it's on our page today. We did receive from the Arkansas Sheriff's Association grant to help us get ready for Red Ribbon Week. And we'll be purchasing some resources and some things to get our kids a little more involved and get them more educated on that was like thirteen hundred dollars. So we're really coming to get that. We just found the account about that on Friday and I presented the check yesterday.
High school, Ms. Umei's included some things here too about advisory meetings. And we have started, this is middle and high school, the twenty-one C has started a bachelor program, has started up on the one high schoolers to Homecoming went really well. Coronation just went off about a hitch and started to build presentation and everything except for one, one little boy, girl, her, her dress, he kept stepping on me. I think she just went ahead and pushed him on to the side and took off without him. But it's always fun to see our little ones involved as well. But it, it really went really well last week. Appreciate those people who worked hard in that. And then Ms. White and Mr. Bennett and Mr. Dixon, all kind of student council and different things played a part in the success of that week. They had college planning out tonight. Ms. Umei, you said how many were there?
Yeah, we had seventeen parents show up with students. So I was very excited about that. We had a couple that come in outside. I was leaving to come over here. So we have a big interest this year on kids going to college and I'm excited to see that.
And someone does come from higher ed and they help walk through how to, how to apply for financial aid, how to apply for scholarships for those that are interested in pursuing that route. Hey, um, Mr. Bell has updated all of his different programs that he coordinates and supervises on pages eight through he's got lots of hats. Is there anything that you want to bring attention to, Mr. Bell, or that's just for their information and if I have any questions, I'd like to know if you can.
I think probably the letters.
And then at the end of page twelve, and our district support plan, and this is a separate item because I didn't want to forget to mention it. Our district support plan is the plan that basically wraps everything that we're doing and that you've approved together. It's our support for our building plans that you approved in June. And includes your academic improvement things. It includes also all of those things under S R, like the facilities, transportation, supplies that we need for COVID. All of that is encompassed in this support plan. So it kind of takes everything you've been seeing along the way and puts it together. And we had submitted it for initial approval and they sent it back to someone in timelines. They had not asked for that in previous years. So we've gotten those timelines added in, going to resubmit it and also send you a link. It's about sixty-five pages, no seventy.
I think we've got seventy.
With all the timelines included. So it's very lengthy. Said tomorrow, I think Mr. Bell was ready to, you're ready to submit it again.
We still have a couple of individuals who have to.
So by the end of the week, I should be able to send you a link to that document and we'll just send it back to the state. And they just want to make sure we've included everything. Y'all can look at it. It's kind of like the S R budget. It's a work in progress. It can be revised as needed. If our names shift, we can revise that too. It's not set in stone. But I will get that to you by the end of this week. Okay, I also included in there, and I emailed this to you, but I wanted to just give you a hard copy again related to COVID. The Arkansas Legislative Research Bureau was asked by legislators to conduct surveys of the school districts regarding mask mandates and COVID cases. And then they send us the results after. They get those surveys each week and they had three weeks of data that they sent us last week. The survey was done again last Friday. We'll get a new update tomorrow that includes the next week. But it just kind of shows week one, two, and three of everyone, week one, two, and three of those with no mask mandate. And week one, two, and three of those with mask mandates on each section for your positive students or quarantine students, your positive employees and quarantine employees. And then they did also say that, you know, there was a significance found in the difference mainly in the quarantine, not the active cases. We're seeing active cases everywhere with or without mask mandates. But the quarantine levels are lower in schools that have mask mandates than in those that do not. And I just want to give you a printout of that in case you had not seen the email or didn't have access to printer to me. Sometimes it's easier to look at the charts in color that they send out to review that data. And again, I can answer questions if you have any regarding that. And I think that's it on my superintendent's report. I do have feedback from our ready for learning committee when we get to some of the things on the and agenda on action items that I've kind of put consider. I do have some input from ready for learning as we get to those items. If you just want me to share that at that time, what the survey results were, then I'm happy to do that. And there is one more thing I'll probably come back to next month, and I may have put it in the main section on the report. But I am going to be meeting with the group that came in to do an evaluation of our HVAC system to come back and give us some recommendations on improving our equality. So I'll have more on that at the next meeting. We also been gathering some information about air filtration systems and that I'll present at the next meeting.
Yeah, I didn't recall. This is, we just got it. I guess I'm going middle school here. I'm trying to, on the survey, I'm just trying to make it, whether it's twelve responses or whether it's just twelve responses of mental.
On which one of staff or the studio? It's like staff, there were twelve responses in all.
Did we follow up on that sixteen percent?
And that's what we asked for comments down below of what we could do to help. And, you know, basically it's just overwhelming as far as time and getting everything taken care of. And so we are trying to do a lot to protect time for teachers during the prep time and things like that. Very common, but no, we are definitely aware of it. Our leadership team has already addressed this and working towards some things that we can do to assist. Can you stop getting specific names in that? Because there's one that I feel like they can be very open.
I just want to know if it looks it. But I'll try to, was that student response, the staff response? We had a hundred and six students that responded.
Yes, isn't that great? And the two that responded to the not too great on that one was personal reasons from outside of school.
And for them.
Making comments about a parent not being it, things like that.
Anybody from the board have any questions? No questions. Next we have a yeah, district budget. There's a couple of things, not so much the budget, I'm looking forward. I'm looking here, I noticed them. It's going to come up late on his way up. We're, we're, we're using some S of funds that I noticed there's some, there's some, some carryover items. And my concern is, is when the S of fund runs out, that item is still there. I mean, are we looking at how we're going to address that? I notice right now we hit, we're meeting real heavily on S, but I'm looking at what we're using S for, and those bills is going to carry forward. But S may not carry forward.
Ms. Furrell or Mr. Bell can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think most of the things that are carryover either we should have like completed like HVAC things or things like that, but the time that runs out, the buses will be purchased. That won't be an ongoing. If it's any of like stipend or retention, things like that, those are things that we want to make clear may only be for the life of S R. And but there may be some funds that can carry it afterwards, like the E S A, E L L. And two, things like that. So we do pretty much everything we look at. We try to examine, is this something we could continue or will be able to.
Because I do, I do see that in, you know, some other thing we're saying, this may be built up on the E S A, but I'm looking at some items that I don't want our staff to be receiving something. They think they're going to continue receiving and they don't have it clear, unnoticed. If S runs out, this runs out.
Yes.
Because so many things kind of, I'm looking at lock me and they're, they're going to be expecting in the future. But I know, yes, as happens right now, but I don't, I don't want to find us in some situations that I found. I saw some other districts find themselves in where they just never thought about it. And when the money was gone, there was a disruption to the districts. Because there was no fourth thought done. It's okay, how are we going to, you know, what's going on? I want us to already be thinking about it. But it changed tremendously. But I know it's also that changed because a lot of S of funds.
Now, on some of this is that we're thinking project, we had to budget also because it'll finance for us.
Yeah, but I saw you up there and they're just going to build us, we're going forward and onto the issues company. I think they did five thousand.
They, they did the, they took the five thousand out of the sign that we have coming for high school. So everything at this point, as soon as we're invoiced, we scan and send that to ASBA, that was management. They send us a check and we will most likely get their check before we even have to issue ours to the person.
So that's why I hear.
We'll be good on it. So now we will from the $1,000 project.
That's all my questions. If the board have any questions, we all was looking over the budget. You have no questions, we got a motion. So, you have a motion, seven, another question. I'll tell you these votes that I, I'll pull you the same time. Yeah, I proposed twenty-one, twenty-two budget has been approved. The next thing is the minority recruitment plan. The board have any questions that relates to minority recruitment plan? I have a few questions. As I was, as I was reading this plane and I was looking at the data, I was finding some statements made that there was no data to support. When like employees took a job at a higher paying school district. But I didn't see no data in that sending. That was the reason we lost anybody, which is a statement put in there. But I didn't see no data in that sending. That was the reason we lost anybody, which is a statement put in there. Like, we just a statement, you know, look over that, I don't see that. I saw parities being made, they didn't follow with the data. Where they say the, our hiring is imperative with our student and our community, but that's not true. It's way below, and I was looking at some statement that we had in here that didn't follow the data.
Some of those, as far as reasons relating, I give those.
I'm looking at not recruiting. And I was looking at how we said we're pairing out, but we're not pairing out. Because I'm seeing a shift upward, and what I'm seeing is, I'm seeing that we're making hires based upon how our administration looks. Look at the data.
We have two, there's special ed teachers that the minority recruitment.
I'm looking at it, I'm looking at the whole data. And I'm looking at it, and what I'm saying is, I don't want somebody to be able to come in, look at our report, and just rip it apart, saying, we just put a report together, and the data, we may have a data, but the data is not present. That makes sense. So we're making statements with the data is not present. We resent just population of data, but we're making statements in other areas. Because another statement I'm looking at is, is we're saying, because we have a 36 meter, we can't hire. But yet we're hiring. I'm looking at the minority report, I totally read the whole report, but I made a point to read everything in this package. And my next question is, if we going through it, did we have some realistic timelines? Because I look at some stuff, we said, okay, by March, I really know March is going to be on this. And I'm looking, I'm looking a lot of, a lot of dates that we're, we have, I knew we got to have a recording there, but are there realistic dates? Because one of they having needs retention, are these recruitment fairs?
Do they usually have those, Mr. Bell?
Actually, you can join handshake, which we do, and they have a few throughout the fall to fill positions for the fall semester. Then most of the other recruitment fairs, usually I say you will schedule theirs a little bit earlier, like in February, March, but most of the other ones are from March 1st through about May 1st. And also, and I think it's in the, in the information that it will also pin on where we are as far as COVID at that point. Last year, I guess, spring 2020, but also more so, even more so last year, they held online career fairs where you either received a packet of resumes per se, and then you could schedule appointments. Or they would do kind of a group Zoom, or you could, you could actually host a group Zoom of your personnel in district and meet with candidate. So that, I think that's what most of the, most of the institutes hired were doing last year. As best as I could find, last year, State Department did not host its own career fair, which they've done prior to COVID. So I know that that's one of the, you know, I've gone as a representative and participated in that for the district over the years.
I saw the career fairs, the principals, just paid a visit, there's some exit interviews on a regular basis. So we don't want to do that in the fall and in the spring. And that gives us exposure to the upcoming students. And then we get a chance to get some names and contacts, which when we start looking for, filling positions, we can run and start calling back to the person.
So now you see what I'm asking. Are we trying to, I looked at all this, and everything is heavily where in the spring. So are we tying our hands with the March date?
As a deadline or as a starting? That's not our starting.
No, if you look, if you look at the target dates, but it's supposed to be done. I'm looking at some, it's amazing, I'm saying, okay, I'm looking at the tree, the tree is moving from fall to spring. So should there not be a better, maybe it's a June? Or, or a May? You see what I'm saying? Because, because how you, how you get that done even right in the village? Because with they, with a COVID, they change the date.
Could you say, give a broad.
I'm seeing, we tie our hands too tight.
Initially, the marks would hit there because as a district, you hope to want to hire them. But you're, you're just saying straight.
Well, see, when I was looking, most things that was in the fall has been moved to in the spring. So a lot of things we may have been looking at don't happen in the fall. So are we tied our hands? So maybe we may get a, okay, we want to do this normal, but we're going to provide this in maybe a May.
I think it's safe to say that we look all year long, and then March is the typical time that we're trying to hire. But I agree, we do a lot in June because of the nature of people taking jobs and going to the districts. That's how it makes sense. But I think it's an all-year process because we're constantly, you know, scanning the talent and even trying to recruit someone around with them. Answer that part of the question.
And they will not let us put a date range on these reports.
No, I'm just saying, when we looking, and they say I'm looking, you know what I'm saying? I'm looking at last year, or I'm looking at three years ago, a lot of heavy things happened in the fall. COVID come, a lot of things changed, a lot of stuff now shifted where to the spring. So the information saying we could have done the fall, it's just not available in the fall, not that we not looking, but are we tying our hands to still being stuck to that March date?
Was it target?
Well, we want to have resignations in, and we want to be hiring in March. That's why that's a target date on that collection and data on exit surveys. Like, if we have people resigning, we want to start finding out why are you leaving the district in a formal way to have the data to back it up. So in March, that's when we hope people are going ahead and letting us know if they plan to leave. They may not do it till afterwards, but that's our target. That's when we want to hire, because if not, if we get much beyond that, it's hard to hire, and we saw that, obviously, every year.
Wait till May, you just about lost.
So that, that's why some of them are there. It's a target. It doesn't mean we necessarily will be able to finish at that moment, but that's our target. They had changed the format of this report, so at least the goal has the past that's in our, simply determining this year on how they want to do.
That's, I'm going, well, we do, I'm going to look at mostly if it follows, and if it follows up, it's different when you're on the outside looking in, and you're on the inside looking at it. Because I don't want it just to the report we submit. I want to be the working partner.
And if I may offer, as a follow-up to that, starting next year, August 1st, each district will have to post, in the past, districts, I believe, 5% or less did not have to submit the minority recruitment, but starting August 1st, 2022, all districts will have to submit a three-year plan every year. And so that's why they've given us a slightly different form this year, because they've already posted the template for the next one. But they gave us this one to use one more year in sort of the intermediary time. So this, this report will actually look, look a little different, well, not a little different, it will look quite a bit different starting next year. And also, Mr. Hatley, to address some things that I know that have been brought up in previous meetings, part of that plan will include tracking where our seniors are. So our seniors, our seniors this year, where did they go as far as, are any of them in education programs as freshmen? And so that's one of those things that will be in that, that new three-year plan that we'll start doing.
I saw a portion of it at this point, I'm glad to see that.
Yes, sir.
And how we was tracking them in the, where it was going, and those that we was trying to track into the education field. I saw something, I saw that.
In our, our district, it has been doing it, but as a state, everybody's wanting to start doing that, starting next August.
Don't think, don't think I'm, I saw all the changes in it. I saw all the things we asked for, I saw the thing, I saw all of that. I just want to make sure we, when we looking at somebody, just looking at fans, and okay, do you have the data, what we're seeing?
They don't have access to any information on breakdown statistically of the definite backgrounds of people that's in the education, who's coming out of college in the education field or out there in a pool to draw from.
Jeremy, I know we get the colleges, you listen, there are.
How much of our.
Well, there may be now, they've started, they've been working on a new website, they trained on this summer. So we may be able to start accessing more of that, because they are trying to track it more as a state, because it's a statewide issue. And so the department, Lance Lamar was talking about it this summer. And they are starting to try to track it and have more grass and more data available to us for the statewide picture.
And I won't say, not knowing, they kick it to that, or what you're doing, you know, I'm not saying, you know, our district, but some district could be doing as best as we can.
They are working on populating statewide data, of course, I do remember that now from that training this summer.
And that's, that's equity.
populated yet or not.
Yes, and that's that equity assistance center that's referenced several times throughout this report is that portion of the State Department of Education. That is, that is a forward.
Anybody else have any questions? So I was supporting about the manager, so we can get a motion.
I like a motion to approve the report.
We have a motion to approve in a second. All of these votes that I, opposed the same saying. Approve. The next is, we've been asked because the, I can get the best answer for that. When we got all the paperwork done, the prices of the buses went up $250. So we need to receive our original approval and have another approval for the purchase of the buses, because there's been a $250 change. By the time we got the approval and the paperwork, everything back from state that relates to the B. But then B is still below the other B in my career.
Yes. And it's still below the budget, what we put in our IRP, so about to.
So if we can just give a motion to do it all in one motion?
So we want to rescind and then approve.
Yes.
I make a motion, we rescind the proposal for the buses and approve the extra $250.
For bus. A second, that.
We have a motion, a second, for the question on the babies' votes that I, oppose you the same saying. Approve the purchase of new bus with additional price. The next thing is, is a quote from the roofing company, and we have a small discussion relates to, you know, roofing company, how is it going to be paid and all that stuff? Do y'all have any questions related to after the approval, Kurt Roofing Company, company? Talking about advance, if not, can I get a motion related to the construction of the roof? A motion, a second, for the questions, all of the babies' votes that I, oppose you the same saying, approve. The next thing is, is the Girdon Plumwood School District Staff Retention Plan. Anybody have any questions that relates to staff retention plan? That was one of the things I was talking about going forward.
And that's one thing, just like we did with the additional compensation last spring, I mean, I think we would have to be very clear in communication that it may not be something we can do every year, we'll have to look beyond. We can use some other funds if they're available, but there are some criteria because of our test scores. You have to have, you know, a certain percent of your students above that in need of improvement to use certain number of funds for this. So no, it could not be guaranteed that when this runs out, that it would still be available, it would depend on our budget at the time. And I just think that if this, something like this was approved, it would just need to be very clear, just like we were in the spring, that it's something that we could do now, but we may not be able to continue. That doesn't mean we wouldn't. We would just have to see where we are at that time. Defining the moment, you know, our funding next year, or not, we're funding this year when we look at operating.
So this is not added to the contract, it's just a bonus?
And it's a bonus, so it doesn't have to be added to stipend schedule contract. It's nothing we are bound to every year, because it would not be part of the stipend schedule we're on the contract.
I was just saying that, sorry about that, and sorry about that.
That's the proposal, but again, in my notes to you all, this is, I mean, it's up to you. And that was a proposal to go across the board. I mean, we have struggled to fill best driver positions, cafeteria positions pair. I mean, we were, we'd hire somebody, and they resigned before they even started, and we hired somebody else. So it has been as difficult to hire classified as it has been to hire certified. So that's why this proposal is for the same across the board, because it's about retention. It's not necessarily about what work is done or what's made, it's about keeping staff, keeping people, and not having to constantly look. Because it's difficult to find anyone for any position right now. We still haven't, we, you know, we were hoping to find an extra best driver to get another bus to add another route to decrease couple, and we can't even, right now, we can't keep ourselves. We're having to beg, coaches and Mr. Spragons is having to drive quite a bit as they sub, and we're struggling to keep these employees.
Anybody else? So that last payment in May, is that post-contract signing?
This one, this would be more of it because they worked this year.
I'm just asking.
I understand.
I'm putting on table. I'm just saying, hey, that, that last baby.
But they had to work the full semester to get that payment. That's why we wanted to do one, half of it in November and half of it in.
I saw that May, I'm thinking, that's what I'm saying, is that May, when post-contract signed it for the next year.
That's, that was not the language of the plan. It was intended for this.
I'm looking at retention.
She leaving, huh?
But based on the ones that came back this year, that would be, have more to do with the COVID than.
This plan is based on returning to work this school year.
This school year.
Working the full school year.
That's why I'm saying that first payment is in November. Thank you for coming back. The last payment is in May. Thank you for resigning. That's what I'm looking at. I'm looking at retention, because before you weren't getting nothing.
That's a reporting that for the work, that banking for the work that I did.
This is saying we're retaining.
This is a hard year to work, COVID years, and to be honest with you, they deserve it, whether they leave us or not. I understand where you're coming from, but they deserve it.
I ain't nobody saying they don't deserve it. I'm saying, let's look at his retention.
And what may help, Mr. Hatley, is logistically, if contracts are distributed, say, on May 1st, and they must return them at the end of the month, they still can rescind after that. So we would basically have to hold a paycheck until after July, or a retention payment until July to, to be sure that we have, that we're clear of any of those. So it's one of those where I could turn my contract, get my check, and then go, oh, I'm not going. Legally, legally, I can still do that.
You didn't say that.
That's why I was rarely reading for this school year. Like, some schools are doing the whole thing upfront and did it in August, because they came back, it's not the contract came back. But some districts are doing what this, I want you to work the semester, and here's your retention bonus for that. And the next semester, here's your retention bonus, so we're not looking for someone in June or February to fill a spot, because they leave mid-year.
And I think it reminds it is exactly why they recommended that we not, that districts not hand of a big bag of money in August, because they can walk and go to Walmart, you know, or anywhere else, and they still keep that bag. So I think that's why they, instead of paying it on the front end in August, they've done, they've recommended doing it some point in the fall, some point for spring. Well, I say that, I think, that's what they've explicitly said, that that's why I'm saying that.
And right now, this is just a proposal for this school year. We would look at it again in the spring, moving forward, see if there's anything we could do next school year on our phones.
You know, we have so many employees that don't live in Garden. They come here from other places, and there's a school right down the road, 17 miles away, that pays more than us, because our village didn't pay us, we don't have any money. And we've had to cap our ears at 15, for 15 years, so I don't get a penny. Why wouldn't they leave? I mean, they don't have any connection that live here. Why wouldn't they go somewhere else where they can, I mean, this is their living, this is their livelihood. Why wouldn't they do it? And they're going to do it. And they're gonna do it. You're gonna lose your season teachers that know after fifteen years and they got to work twenty-eight, they're not getting more money unless the state happens to give us some more. We're in a bad situation. We used to pay more than school districts around us. That was a, it was incentive for people to come and work here. But now, you know, that was, you know, it was so much more than just, we can't, we're gonna move the primary school over here, it's so much more than thinking our staff financially, and they don't make enough to start with. And I don't blame them for leaving. We can write down everything we want to, we give them six hundred dollars twice. And if press their architecture options job, they're gone. And I don't blame them. So we're gonna have to do something, we're gonna have to get a village campaign together that will work and it will suit people and try to get it passed if we want our school to stay here. And that's just bottom line. We're down fifty students, we can't get staff, we're kind of in an emergency crisis situation here, and we're gonna have to do something. That's my opinion.
And what happened is statement, that was, that was discussed, the city spoke, we accept the city's response. We move forward, we've already made it known that this was an issue we was gonna hit, so it's no secret to nobody, we know we gotta make some tough decisions. But we must respect the wishes of who? The city. So my question on the table is, the retention plan. My suggestion was, I'm just, that's my suggestion, but the board gonna make the decision. Because I don't wanna, I don't wanna be trying to start a school year battling field slots, but what's the motion of the board on this retention plan?
Play around with the money, go look shady, and six hundred dollars, anybody's correct? No pressure.
What's the motion of the board on this plan?
I make a motion, we accept.
Three hundred dollars for?
The two different, the split.
Once the motion was made and we back to discussion, the motion dies.
Just trying to find out what we're voting on, the three hundred and the three hundred, is that what the vote is?
Back in the discussion, yes, the motion is, the plan is we pay them three hundred in November, and we pay them three hundred in May.
Okay.
For working this school year. I'm looking at it now, three hundred for the first semester, three hundred for the second semester of this school year. I'm okay with it.
I'm, I make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion of the second, but the question, I'm telling you, both sad ass. Oppose, the same saying. Next thing is, is, for the moment. Okay, we back that point now, what we said at the board, we discussed it before, we were, Gertin Public School, did we have a mask mandate? So now we have to reconsider, you know, whether we can continue the mask mandate or we're gonna do something different. My thoughts, based upon this, that I'm looking at is, I wanna continue the course. But it's up to the board, I just see it, but I feel that a little bit better because we're still escaping. People, we, 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 you know, to help and I think we're gonna turn the table by maintaining a mask mandate. But it's up to the board, we open the discussion right now. How do y'all feel about? No discussion, okay. Can I get a motion that relates to the mask mandate, if the mask, continue the mask mandate or not continue the mask mandate?
I make a motion, we continue the mask mandate.
We have a motion a second for the question. All in favor use both that I have. Oppose, the same saying. Okay, this time we're gonna go to a hand vote. Be so can, all in favor of the mask, continue the mask mandate, please raise your hand. Oppose. Mask mandate passes.
We're gonna look at it again next month?
How many months? Is it every three months?
Oh, I know, I'll probably look at it.
That we do need to actually put that into the motion, I'd like that open for y'all to decide if you wanna do it monthly, if you want to have semester, I'll let that blank.
What do y'all wanna review this?
I make a motion, we look at it monthly.
All right.
Say it.
Are we a motion a second, look at it monthly, so all in favor use both that I have. Oppose, the same saying, so next month, we'll be revisiting this, so make sure, keep the data coming, amen. Because we may need to turn the corner, let's do what we gotta do, because I'm just. Next thing is the personnel package. Y'all got a motion about that? Okay, I'm sorry. Okay. Everybody have to go with your personnel package. How, how did you feel about the personnel package?
I would like to know more about that parent family community engagement facilitator. I guess I understood exactly, each person, there's one for each school?
Yeah, and Mr. Val can tell a little bit more about those criteria, you can see coordinates that for the district, they've really changed a lot of the scope. Expectations for this or.
Yes, and, okay, so under, by federal requirement, districts have had to have, have had to address parent involvement if they were getting federal funds, so like Title I. Then, when President Obama got the ESEA version approved in December two thousand and fifteen, then the new language, they changed it, and they said, instead of just getting parents involved, we need parents and family engaged. So the shift has been, and in our state, our state said, and we also believe it's the community at large. So they've added all of those components together in that it's parent, family, and community engagement. In Arkansas, the way that we have it structured is, we have a district coordinator, and then we have someone at each building who helps with as far as the specific plans, documentation, you know, like from parent teacher conferences, PTO meetings, things of all that, all like that. And so that's been in place for years, that structure. What we were talking about was because our families in these underserved groups are, normally, we catch them, we get to engage them with open house, can't do that, with parent teacher conferences, not coming outside. With events on the campus, can't do a lot of those indoor type things. So to try to offset that, we were talking about using that same structure that we use for parent, family, and community engagement, but adding a couple of folks at each building, who would, who would then kind of pick up the slack and reach out to those who are, who are either identified under McKinney Vento, which is the homeless, or also to reach out to our English language learners. And so they would work parallel to what, what's going on as far as that structure. I'm the one who has the district cats as far as coordinator, so I still do all the same paperwork and all of that. The problem is, is that it's not taking anything off of my job, the problem is that we, we have additional work that needs to be done that we need people checking and going, you know what, I didn't see that kid, and I haven't seen that kid in the hallways in the last few days, somebody needs to check. Well, they are the somebody. And so that's the idea, is that we can use our, our ESR funds right now to help to check on these, again, what the federal government calls underserved students, and so that they can help follow up on. Does that, Mr. Thomas, does that adequately describe?
How many homeless students do we have declared homeless in our district?
Well, actually, we're doing all the reporting and everything for October one, which will be this Friday, so we're finishing up all that. To clarify, I know a lot of us probably, when we hear the word homeless, we may think of someone living in a box, living under a bridge.
I know.
But it is, but again, as you know, and I've seen in the report, it's doubling up for financial reasons. It's, it's having had to go somewhere else, maybe, maybe somebody's moved in with them, maybe they're caregiving for another, another family member or what have you.
How many we have last year?
I think we had, I wanna say we were in the twenties. Yeah, I think, I think we're in the high twenties to low thirties, and the thing is, is if you identify them at any point during the year, they remain categorized that way for the rest of the year for those benefits, even if they, even if, say, we identified them in November, but then they've got everything reconciled by January, they still stay in that category for the rest of the year in case they need those supports. But if I remember correctly from our cycle reports, like Mr. Spragons was saying, we were in the high twenties, low thirties throughout the whole year.
And what we find with, you know, the work that goes into it is, you wish it was easy enough to pick up a phone and call, but but you call three numbers, it doesn't work anymore, and now you're, now you're working on second and third, or people who know these folks and which, what apartment are they living in now? And that's just a, it's a very consuming process, I mean, you do, you know, but it's gotten worse over the years.
Well, I was just thinking, we're doing Zoom for parent teacher conference, so how's someone actually dealing with this? You know, are we, are they actually working with the parents and?
Right, and that's why these two groups are part of that underserved, is because they're less likely to call the school and say, hey, I need this, you know, or to, or to make an appointment with the teacher to Zoom with them, whatever, it's, there's a lot more, you have to track them down, and again, as Mr. Spragons was describing, that's not always the easiest way because their, their living situation or their language barrier makes it more difficult.
These are the one to three students per teacher who we never got a hold of during.
Right, last year, right, or, or yeah, this year.
Who, who is gonna be charged or personnelized to do this, do this work?
Well, our parent family engagement building people are faculty at that campus who submit their interest to do that to their supervisor. And so I would assume, Mr. Thomas, that's probably what we're thinking in this as well, so.
So it would be a voluntary.
Right. I'm sorry, and a licensed person, sorry, I didn't mean to, the license.
Did you say two per building?
We, we have one who's a parent and family person, and that person would stay in place, so, right, so this would add two additional ones, one to focus on ESOL or ELL, I'm sorry, and one to focus on the McKinney Vento aspect. But yes, they would be able to reach out to whomever.
We did that, we didn't just pay for it. Yeah, it's just part of the job.
Don't let me ask you something. This, 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 one of them, programs, you said we don't pay for it, but ESEA agree, what happens? There is no ESEA funds.
Right, so, yes.
So it's time and just go away?
Right, so our proposal is to pay for this with ARPSER, which twenty percent of every district's allotment, which in our case, twenty percent of one point seven million is approximately three hundred and forty thousand, has to go to these types of things. So, so this is part of that over the next three years, but as you and Mr. Thomas were discussing earlier in the meeting, we are trying not to do anything that doesn't have sustainability. So we would push these off to, if, if the district saw that these were valuable spots that we needed to continue after the life of the funds of ARPSER, and assuming there's not any additional years of COVID beyond that, that we have to keep adding pots of money, those, we would recommend pushing those off to our categorical, so for example, if we have someone who's focusing on English language learners, we would pay for that out of our state categorical English language learner funds. We can also use our Title I funds for this, so if we wanted to, if we wanted to maintain the McKinney Vento part, we could pay for that out of Title I funds. And those are things that, in general, they are earmarked and restricted funds is what we call them, because we can't just use those to hand out a bonus or to up the pay scale or to do these other, or, you know, to just buy a bus or whatever, they, they have to be the, what we always talk about is, they can't be the cake, and they can't be the icing of the cupcake, but they can be the sprinkles on the top, the things the district couldn't afford and probably can't afford because of the, the local tax base and community revenues, so therefore, this federal money comes in that we can do some of those types of things, so those would be some of the sustainability options. If we felt like those positions were worthwhile, at that point, we may say, you know what, people are able to come back on site, this is not really a necessity like it was. We'll still have to keep the, the original or the primary parent, family, and community engagement person, because that's still a compliance thing for the state. So we would still have the, the individual at each building for sure, we have to keep that going up operating. But these others could be paid out of ESR now and sustained out of categoricals later.
So who is gonna be identifying the kids that they're gonna see and, and follow up and say that they are, that they are being trained other than, I'm just, we're paying somebody seven hundred and fifty dollars, and they're walking out to school every three o'clock and going home.
Yes, sir. Okay, so on the identifying part, the, you know, that packet that you get, that gets sent home at the beginning of the year, every year with, when a kid begins the school year. In, within that, one of the, one of the forms is the residency form. And that's the one that we have to go through, and I, I've touched every one of those across the district, I have to read the responses on every one of them. There are certain responses that if they give on there, that I, I make a copy of, those are the triggers, I have a flow chart from the state that tells us, okay, these folks you have to follow up with, that's the part I was referencing a little bit ago, finishing up that process this week. So once they're tagged and in the system that way, once I make contact with them to verify, like, for example, I, I've had a, I've had a family before who, their paperwork would indicate, oh, they may be eligible for McKinney Vento services, their, their child. Follow up with them, oh yeah, we are looking for another place to live, but that's because we're building a house right now, and so we're living in the trailer on site. Okay, nevermind, next. And so, so that's why I have to go there and vet those. Once they're in the system, once they're in our East School Plus system that way, then those students would be, would be identified for that campus, so they would know, they would have their work cut out for them, laid out for them as far as good to contact, then it would be their building supervisors would keep up with as far as, are they, you know, making these contacts, oh, wait a minute, I need you to be sure to check on this, have we heard anything, and that way they can report into them. Then I have to double check with them and with their, their supervisors, they have to sign verification for me so that I can sign off, so this rule can cut checks to them at the end of the year, so. And then with the ESOL part, those students, again, that big packet that the families get, when they first register in an Arkansas school district, they figure, they fill out an Arkansas Home Language Usage Survey, and there are ten questions on it, and again, y'all probably recognize these as parents that, that'll say like, you know, what language is spoken in the home, what language do you prefer communication from the school, what language, da, 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 what language does your child understand, what? If that page is not exclusively English all the way down, then I have to follow up with them, and again, you'll have those who say, well, you know, we're going to, we're gonna take a vacation to Mexico this summer, so we're practicing Spanish. Okay, that's not a Spanish speaking, huh? Or Dora the Explorer, that's another one our state coordinator uses every year, is, oh yeah, we watch a lot of Dora. You're not, that's not the issue. So both of the remaining ones, then I have to screen them, there's a state assessment that I have to put them on the computer and supervise them, individually testing them. And then I get the scores back from them, and then I take that data back and meet with the committee at each campus. And if, if they pass all those hurdles and then they're identified, then we prescribe services which the families can, they can reject. We still have to test the students in the spring and everything, but, but we recommend these services or recommend these adjustments, these, these adaptations. And then, again, that would be a list that would be in East School Plus, that those people at each campus would have access to that listing and say, okay, so here are twelve people scattered, you know, in grades five through eight at CMS, and we're gonna focus on them, we're gonna target them, check on their families. Now, obviously, if we have students who are experiencing homelessness or students who are English language learners at one campus, they potentially will have siblings at the other campuses, so those people may be crossing up and, and hopefully, again, kind of as Mr. Spragons was alluding to, between one or two, they'll be able to cross, cross up and get hold of those folks, because, you know, sometimes when we do the backpack program, for example, a middle school kid or a high school kid doesn't wanna carry a backpack full of canned goods home, but the sibling in primary school may take it, and that's gonna end up helping pull things, so again, that's part of the idea, and this is, is that we're, we're tightening the net, if you will, to try to capture and catch these, these underserved kids.
Let's approach the motion, saying that we approve it, when funding goes away, it goes away. Which approach the motion, saying that we approve it, but when funding goes away, it goes away. Does that make sense? As long as the funding is there, we don't have, I mean, it presented to whoever's gonna get the stuff, but when this fund goes away, it's stopping. Like, like, you know, we're up front, we're just stopping, we're just, so they don't anticipate future.
Well, the ways stipends work is you, you have a period, but like, if you don't tell them they're not gonna get it, then it continues. But you can give them non-renewal notice, or you can let them know ahead of time, we're not gonna continue that, they can resign it. Or you can just non-renew the stipend, not their whole contract, but you can non-renew the stipend, just like you can non-renew a teacher contract. So there is notification that has to be given in that case.
I wanna make sure I missed this. We did say that this type of can be built upon the ESOL grid.
ARPSER, in this case, yes, sir. Yeah, the, the American rest.
You have other questions and other concerns? What we do, huh? Yeah. And well, gather, we know, we have motion of second for the question, I think it's both side. Oppose, you the same side? So we can ask with the, the next thing is just other, everybody knows that the next meeting is six o'clock, rather than next meeting is six o'clock, it's gonna be the, what's that, the, the report, annual report, and also four hours, six hours, also need six hours, no, don't get late. At a, it'll be the length from five to eight thirty. You can need to do it by Zoom, and you can actually go on site, if you wanna meal private, you wanna go on site. And Austin, so is, is up, you know, we gotta get those six hours.
And if you'll let me know your preference, and you can split, you can, you know, everybody doesn't have to go on site, everybody doesn't have to Zoom, she says personal, whatever works for you. I just need to give her a list of who's doing what, basically, so she can get everybody registered. That doesn't have to be tonight, that, that's in the next week or so. I'll need to be getting that information to Dawson so they can plan. But those are the six hours required by the state. In person or then?
So the board have any?
Make a motion, we adjourn.